...to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Do you have a notice?
I'll read it again. The town of Shandaken Town Board will hold public hearings on Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, to hear those for or against number one at 6:15, local law number five, 2024, local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law. And second hearing at 6:30, public hearing on the adoption of the preliminary budget to the 2025 annual budget, 7209, State Route 28, Shandaken, New York. And roll call. Board member Drake?
Here.
Board member Nysel?
Here.
Board member Steen?
Here.
Board member Anne Blarkum?
Here.
Well, obviously, there's not a ton of attendance in the room, but for the sake of the video recording, Supervisor Discafani unfortunately has a family emergency and is unable to attend today, or potentially for at least a short period of time. And so I am chairing the meetings of today. I think it is otherwise worth noting, and we'll probably repeat this a couple of times, but there was very briefly a sort of unfinished preliminary budget that was posted to the website. Unfortunately, the supervisor was not able to fully complete that. And so we made the decision to remove that budget for the time being, and we will formally retract it in the general meeting here in about forty-five minutes. In the meantime, a tentative budget has been posted on the website. And in the tentative budget, the proposed levy is, sort of the town-specific levy, is four million, six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. We did check with the Office of the State Comptroller, and the tax cap is four million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three. So we are approximately twenty, twenty-three thousand below the official tax cap. So it is, if we were to retain the tentative budget as presented, it would not actually be necessary for us to pass a tax cap increase. However, historically, we have done so, and obviously, we still have to go through the rest of the budget process, tentative preliminary, and so on. So I do think it is still probably advised for us to pass the tax cap increase resolution. It's probably appropriate to wait greater than zero seconds, because seeing as there's nobody here, call it a minute and close the public hearing unless anyone, of course, has conversation on the board.
Tax cap, not for me?
Nope.
So I give it the obligatory forty-five seconds of awkward silence, and then the table is closed. My phone changed, so if there's no, make a motion to close the first public hearing on tax cap levy.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and we will pick this back up in seven minutes for the next public hearing. It's kind of fun, isn't it?
How did the first water meeting go?
Good.
Good.
We have a chair, a vice chair, and secretary, all appointed, and they have a list of tasks to start with. Our first real meeting will be the eighteenth, but I'm not the only one.
What time is it?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. Barb, Barb, we'll confirm that, the locations, yes. Yeah. Yes, I imagined, so, yeah. No, I don't think so. Carrie, for the tour anyway, so.
It was, after I got off the phone with you today, the first time, I was driving a nine W in my truck that I bought.
You bought a truck?
Yeah, I bought a ninety-seven Ford Ranger, and a stick shift, love it. But I had to get inspected, so I got inspected at Walts, and I went to Kingston to Home Depot, and I was driving back, and I'm like, it feels kind of weird. And I look back, and the bed liner was standing up, the whole thing, and I went to brake, and I caught wind and flipped off on nine W into traffic.
That liner?
The whole liner.
Oh, that's great.
So eight feet of rugged plastic. Luckily, there was no one behind me.
I got in right. Building perimeter, fire inspections, one pre-inspection, eleven inspections. See, I got everything. That's Alan.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. I've always enjoyed.
I put that in your box, do you see? I remember. How long it take me to think of that?
There's a difference from the two reporting sites.
Took me how long?
Somewhere between these two, the ideal.
So, Robert, you're going to mention about the burn ban and the water district, water low water. Did you email me a copy after the minutes?
I wrote it about ten minutes ago.
Okay, I see that. So, yeah, so if you want to tell people about the alert system, sign up, but the water district, they have to sign up with me because it's a separate system, I have to put them in it. We have so many different, well, we have three different alerts that we do. We do two waters and then a general.
I mentioned other alerts before.
Don't contact Joyce, town clerk system, about the alert system. Oh, shit. So, yeah, because, and the thing is, like I told you, if there's a fire in Phoenix or Pine Hill, we're screwed. Because then those two towns are going to run out of water. I would, don't go light anything outside. That's what happened the last time, that we said.
You are on camera. It was mentioned.
I went to.
That was just mentioned. You're on.
Good.
Yeah.
I can't believe they're still asking on Facebook if it's on.
All right, well, it is six-thirty.
I have six-thirty.
Would you be ready? Sorry?
I think we're on.
You are, okay. You're, okay, all righty. Well, I'd like to open the hearing on the preliminary Shandaken budget at six-thirty. Let's show the agents again. Is that, yeah, all right. Joyce, you can read the notice.
Town of Shandaken Town Board will hold public hearings on Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, to hear those all for or against. Number one, six fifteen, local law number five, to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law. And number two, six thirty, public hearing on the adoption of the preliminary budget to the 2025 annual budget. Seven two oh nine, State Route 28, Shandaken, New York.
So as a bit of background, earlier this week, there was an unfinished preliminary budget that was briefly put on the town website. Unfortunately, the supervisor's had a family emergency and was unable to complete a finalized budget, and so it was decided to take that budget down and ultimately to schedule a new budget workshop and budget hearing, which are located as motions in the general meeting, which will start in approximately thirty minutes. So at this time, there is not really a published, there is not a published preliminary budget. There is a published tentative budget on the website that will be discussed somewhat today, as well as on a budget hearing to be scheduled in the next general meeting for November 12th at six-thirty and November nineteenth at six-thirty. In preparing the tentative budget, would very much like to say thank you to the folks here on this board who gave useful feedback and were very gracious, as well as a number of managers in the town, Amy and Barb and Grace and Kara, among others, who reviewed the numbers and provided useful feedback and notes as well. And then additionally, former supervisor Rob Stanley, who was also very gracious with his time and expertise and was welcome to, I very much appreciated his time and thoughtfulness in reviewing it. At this time, there is no preliminary budget, so I don't see any particular purpose to us continuing to have a hearing on the preliminary budget. There's also no one in attendance today. So if it is suitable to the board, I would make a motion to close this public hearing.
Before we do, I just wanted to say thank you to you and Ellie for taking the bull by the horns and helping us get something together that we can be proud of as a board.
Appreciate that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
So when will you schedule the public hearing? Is that going to be at this meeting?
Yeah, so.
One of those motions?
That's what those motions are for.
So it says, schedule a budget hearing you have for the nineteenth, so it's a public hearing, budget public hearing?
Budget public hearing, correct, yes, yes.
I'll fix it on my notes. At six? So you want to make that six-thirty?
Six-thirty is the other amendment.
Change both of these to six-thirty?
Both of those have been changed to six-thirty, yes, yes, please.
Unless I'm mistaken, for the December meeting, we need to adopt the police contract.
Okay.
Because we haven't yet, and I don't know if that was circulated to you guys. We did reach an agreement. You guys should have a copy of it at some point, I believe.
Yeah, I don't believe I received it.
It was, I can give you details on what.
Would you be able to resend that?
I think I can send you the M L A.
Okay.
I just want to reach out to Matty and the rep just to make sure it's okay.
Okay.
But as far as, I signed it, so as far as I know, it's final. But we just have to adopt it.
Okay.
And I think December is the last opportunity. Unless we're going to do it on like the twenty-eighth, yeah, so.
Let's avoid that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
So we have till twenty-first to get it to county, but we'll probably send it the twentieth, the next day.
Yeah, not cut it so finely. We're already cutting it.
Yeah.
A little thin.
That's a lot for towns.
I'm sure there's folks who do it late, but, but we have a schedule here, it seems appropriate, so.
So what would the purpose be at the November twelfth meeting? Are you going to vote to make it the preliminary? Yeah, yeah. You don't think it's going to change much, or?
We're not in an actual meeting right now. But like, has only seen it for what, four days? So like, that's not really.
Well, if we, I'm not necessarily pushing this, but if we did do that today, the hearing could be the twelfth. Are you here the twelfth? Oh, I'm here the twelfth. If you get one more person present for the public hearing on the twelfth instead of the nineteenth.
I, do folks have concerns with the budget? Like I said, this was done on a Friday night.
I mean, I've gone through it enough times now that I'm, I'm good with this.
You feel confident making a preliminary budget?
I, I do.
Okay.
Because we only have seven or two hours, and we have, you know, enough time.
Let's strike motion two. Revised motion three to be scheduled public hearing. So this would be the twelfth at six-thirty.
Or just make, strike number three and make number two.
Whichever, one way or another.
The day for the twelfth.
The twelfth would be the public hearing.
Just get rid of number three.
And then I do think we should have a budget conversation ahead of open, well, actually, maybe after public comment. And make that, make a motion to adopt this as the preliminary, preliminary budget.
That works.
Is that?
That works for me.
Okay. And so you will be, you three will be present for the twelfth?
The twelfth.
And we'll still zoom you in?
Yeah.
I won't, we won't be able to do a resolution to give you voting.
It's all good.
We had a bit of.
Yeah, we want to do a little more research on it.
Yeah, we probably can, but I don't like that level of improv when it can be avoided. We do, we do too much of that.
Really? Sophie's missing all the fun. Is that with the dog? She could be in here listening to us.
Cameras are on, right?
Yeah, we're live and running and rolling.
What's that? No.
That's fine.
Do you have a favorite poem you'd like to recite?
I've been working on my stand-up.
We could, we could. Or we might get more people to show up.
Yes, yes, actually. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm countered. Want to get the, like, meeting?
I, yeah, I, I, I can see it's a sort of, yeah.
Yeah, do you want a cup? Yeah, yeah, one here. They might have those funny cups. You have the hole, yeah. The others downstairs, they have regular cups on top of the floor.
Chair?
No. Not really big fan, never.
I loved him in Game of Thrones.
He was in some movie with, you know, Big Brother, so that's like, well.
He was in a movie.
Big Brother.
So we're going to make this?
Yes, that, see, I knew I should know who it was.
Dwayne Johnson.
Dwayne Johnson, or some. Red something, red notice.
Red notice.
Kind of funny. It attacked somebody with a guitar.
That would be his weapon of choice. Mine's a truck bed liner. That's how I get there. Made it for a really stressful ride home.
Did you go pick it up?
Yeah. Luckily, nobody hit it.
Yeah, yeah.
Dragged it off the highway. But I was just like staring at it in my mirror.
The whole line.
Fluffing up and down.
Have you seen the werewolf movie, the werewolf one? So I finished the play.
Oh, really? That's cool.
It was fun. Was that kind of cool, because it was the first time any local scene was shown?
Yeah.
Everyone, you hear, everybody, why is my?
Have you ever seen Steakland?
No.
Steakland was shot in, I think, twenty-ten in Pine Hill.
Steakland?
Yeah, so like the bridge to go to the Beller Beach?
Yeah.
Is used as like a border crossing to Canada, and then Pine Hill and Andes are used as like the main shots. But I was home brewing at the time, I hadn't become a brewer yet.
Steak isn't a neat steak, or steak isn't?
Steak isn't.
Got it.
And I was putting my wort out in the snow to cool it, because I didn't have a wort chiller, and they came and yelled at me because I ruined the shot. I'm just trying to make beer, man.
There it is.
Yeah, it's pretty good, actually. I liked it better than Werewolf with him. Not that it's a bad film, it's a good film.
It's okay to have a crap list. To like one more than the other, totally agree. I'm going to add it to my watch list.
I've never seen the sequel, so don't, you know, hold me to that.
Steakland Two, The Steaklander. I am totally going to watch this. Yeah, the, the, the playhouse. The screen's beautiful, yeah, you know. Next week, we have to upgrade the sound system, I think, but I'm very frustrated about sound, so it could be me. We're doing the Goonies system.
Oh, that's cool.
Guess I'm taking care of the public announcements portion of the meeting earlier.
No, oh, yeah, Dave's doing the work, huh? I don't know if it was his younger kids, a teenager, too. Yeah, just care. To the car, Finn.
See if you can find a seat somewhere, the, maybe there's one over there. Try them all out, one at a time. Try that one right there, it's very comfortable.
All out.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't anticipating eighty degrees.
I was helping a friend with a storage space in Kingston. Should have went short on the ten, dying. Like the November tomatoes.
I guess I could still plant garlic.
Still could.
Thought it was too late. Yeah.
Pretty sure last year I was skiing for the first time. This coming weekend, but the following one was my first skiing last year. I'm told, though, that when you get the really good snow, you got to wait until it gets below seventy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I haven't been to the, to the, to the bowl in New Jersey?
Yeah, big, big snow.
Never been.
It's awesome.
You've been?
Yeah, we go down there for training.
Oh, yeah. Took a turn around to the, to the quarry, and I do a few parts there. Water park and the, the new park, right? We, 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 I think it was so cool.
Yeah.
They keep, keep this in that, that area, like, what, that, that, too?
I've seen videos of each of it, and they were.
It's cool because you book it by the hour.
Okay.
So you go, you don't have to like commit to a day ticket and just hang out there all day, you can ski for an hour, go get food. There's always so much you can do, it's two, two slopes, so.
I'm sure.
I don't know, the company pays. I think it's pretty expensive.
Is there skiing in Whiteface or is there, do they make a snow?
Uh, Whiteface is, I don't know, they, they were getting snow. Nobody's going to, the state's not going to pull the trigger on snowmaking until Thanksgiving, or the week before Thanksgiving.
Southern, like, that, it's snow falling, walls, like, can't make to see one out, but it wasn't much sticking.
Yeah. When I got to Denver, it was eighty degrees, and it was that hot until the day I left. All of a sudden, I was like driving. All of a sudden, I was, like, driving to the airport, and it started snowing. And then I got back here, and it was eighty degrees. So, it's me, I think, I don't know. Saturday. And they're, they, they just got a foot of snow, foot and a half today. And I'm sure I'll get back and it'll be hot. The burn ban's still in the factory.
This is, this is home board, I think, this is a step up.
Yes, yes.
Not to wait. I find, uh, the inner workings of our local government riveting. Cameras are on, right? She did so much, she's all of you, she had to come see it for herself. You missed her singing, though, I told you.
Hmm.
Tight set.
That's good.
She didn't believe me.
It's all about crowd work. Hello.
Have we, kick, there was gonna be a kickoff meeting. Peter was gonna set up to kickoff, remember, get it started? So, we are... One, one, it's not, not really gonna be any work involved, so, so we reached out out to, to, uh...
I think it was like a discussion, like a council meeting.
The process?
Yeah.
I never got that big of a role to hold there, like sort of doing the learning.
And they took me there.
It appears to be seven o'clock.
And it is.
If this ever works, then we will call the general meeting session at 7:00 P.M. Joyce, if you do the roll call.
Board member Trey.
Here.
Board member Nysel.
Here.
Board members Sting.
Here.
Board member Blarca.
Here.
Would someone like to make a motion of the minutes of the previous meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, obviously, I am not the supervisor, but am doing the supervisor's report today. Unfortunately, Peter Dischafani, the supervisor, has a family emergency and is unable to attend today and has been unavailable for a short period of time. A few things have gotten passed this way. Obviously, one of the main items on today's agenda is or was going to be the passage of the final budget. Earlier this week, there was an unfinished preliminary budget that was put onto the website. Again, unfortunately, that wasn't able to be completed by the supervisor due to the family emergency. However, we have put onto there a tentative budget that will get some amount of discussion today and potential approval as a preliminary budget. A few other things would like to note. Firstly, I'd like to give the congratulations to Sarah Engster for her election and being named next town justice. Additionally, would like to note that we are currently and indefinitely within a burn ban. Obviously, it's very dry out, so would request that everyone keep their fires frankly nonexistent. There's no burning allowed of any kind at this time until we get more rain. Similarly, and along those lines, we would ask that everyone keep their water usage as reasonable and responsible as possible.
In Phoenician Pine Hill.
In both of our main water districts, Phoenicia and Pine Hill. My understanding is that the reservoirs are more or less holding even. However, because the streams are running slower, our pumps are having to work longer in order to keep those reservoirs at the equivalent level, which obviously is more electricity, more chemicals, more wear and tear on the pumps themselves, and ultimately will only hold as long as there is water for them to pump. And so, again, until we have more rain, we would ask folks to keep their water usage as minimized as they reasonably can. It is by no means an emergency situation, but it is responsible for everyone to reduce their water usage as much as they can there. A handful of other items and projects that I think is probably worth doing an update. So, one that hasn't come up in conversation particularly recently is related to cell service and emergency radio. Obviously, the situation in town has remained without reliable cell service or reliable emergency radio in some areas for quite some time. My understanding is that the county has identified a number of parcels spread across the town, both on the Phoenicia side and roughly in the Big Indian Oliveria area, as well as in the Pine Hill area, that are under consideration for towers. However, none of those land, either acquisitions or contracts or easements, have fully come to fruition. And ultimately, I think, part of our town responsibility, but we would encourage members of the public as well, is to make this a higher priority with the county. So, the county planning department is a lead on this, as is county emergency services, as is county legal. I don't believe there is any deep opposition to any of the progress that we're facing, nor do I think there is a lack of financial resources. At this point in time, it is simply there's a lot of projects and this one hasn't really become at the top of the county's list. And I think we have a collective responsibility to try to make this as high of a responsibility as possible. The county legislature had its emergency services committee meeting today. Obviously, was not able to attend that, but I am hoping to attend the next one in order to argue that case. But again, I would ask that members of the public who think this is an important issue to contact the county and indicate that this is a very important one. As many of us saw, looking at Helene and Milton, we know what, and of course, everyone who lived here during Irene, you know what a disaster can look like. And the lack of communication, both cell service and emergency radio, is deeply problematic. It will not serve us well. And so, this needs to happen sooner versus later. I think we're collectively agreed on that. On a hopefully slightly more optimistic but related note, earlier, sorry, late last month, the Conservation Advisory Council, as part of their meeting, had a number of people here to discuss emergency preparation and mitigation. And one thing that came out of that meeting is that the county has devices roughly large suitcase sized, called plum cases, which are communication devices when towers have become unavailable. And the county has some number of these. And so, Chief Story is currently evaluating whether these are useful in our area. And of course, we would be able to avail ourselves of the counties. However, we also have grant money that the CAC has brought in. And if these devices appear to have utility for the town, I believe we will potentially entertain a recommendation to purchase a plum case of our own. Again, only if it works. But if that is a successful device, then it's something that I think we should have available to our emergency services for those emergency communications in the case of a disaster like an Irene or a Milton or a Helene. Few other small, well, maybe not smallish, but we did submit a New York Forward grant application for improvements to the Pine Hill Main Street. We would expect to hopefully hear back on that grant within the month of November. If we were awarded this, it would entail $4.5 million that would be used for various projects, but more or less dedicated to the improvement of the Pine Hill Main Street, both visually and functionally. We have submitted a SMIP grant, which is with the Shokin Watershed Stream Management Program for hiring a company called Tetra Tech, who would assist the town in retaining and hopefully eventually improving upon its community rating system rating. That's for flood and flood.
Sure.
When you have a higher rating, individuals have access to improved insurance rates. But fundamentally, it's an evaluation, I believe, of the town's readiness and progress in flood mitigation measures. I'm hoping I have that reasonably correctly. Yeah. Again, in kind of a scattershot order here, of course, there's been conversations about the relocation of the town hall. And we had that study that we evaluated, some maybe two-ish months ago, that evaluated four parcels. So, to the best of my knowledge, where that currently stands is the parcel that was the best regarded in that particular study happened to be one roughly in the Big Indian area that is currently owned by the D.P. And they are currently working through what might be required for there to be a land swap for us to get access. That land has a conservation easement. There hasn't been a ton of progress historically amongst the state of removing conservation easements. But there is quite a bit of will to do so. And if so, that would give us a potential parcel that would be available to the town for us to move this town hall. Again, that's not a decision that's been made, that's not finalized by any means, but that is the parcel that was evaluated as being the best one in that particularly study and was, I believe, favorable when this board reviewed it. And so, we're kind of currently waiting for that process to work a little bit further along before seeing which ways we want to go otherwise with that conversation. But the hope is that that might give us access to a free parcel of a relatively decent buildable size that would potentially allow the town to have a full municipal campus, including, of course, the highway garage, ambulance bays, police facilities, as well as whatever else we might happen to need. Again, very preliminary, but that's where I believe that currently stands at the moment. If it didn't come past everybody already, June 20th to 22nd of next year, Bel Air announced Mountain Jam. And all I can say to that is that both the towns, emergency services, as well as the counties, county are aware of this and will do what is needed to make sure that that's a successful event. Safety-wise, I'm not aware of any permitting that has come past the town as of yet, but it is on the radar. And so, again, there's, I think, an expectation of multiple thousands of people, visitors, coming to our town during that particular weekend. Andrew? I believe the historic answer to that, maybe you can speak to this.
Yeah, historically, the answer is no, but last year, Robert did some pretty good diplomatic work with Orda, where they did start to kick back. Whether that continues or not, that's the next battle.
They have sent in, for lack of a better term, donation checks to the town for their usage to at least a degree. But that wouldn't be specific to an event, it would be more their overall usage of our emergency services. Very much unrelated to that, of course, earlier this year, we had hired a entity called Benadio to provide kind of an overall audit of our fiscal practices. They have not yet sent us a final version of it, they did send the board a draft version of it. My expectation is that as soon as the final version of it, which candidly is going to be exactly the same as the draft version, but my expectation is that we will add that to the website. But in the meantime, we have engaged them to do a couple of things that were recommended in that report, namely, training on monthly reconciliations. And they're expected to come onsite, actually in about two weeks, to train our staff on how to do monthly reconcili, sorry, monthly budget reconciliations on behalf of the board. We have also, I believe contracted with them to provide an updated controls handbook for risk mitigation, of course, of financial items. And lastly, we will be contracting for them to do the annual fiscal reports that are the requirements of the state. So, they would do the 2023 report, which we are behind in submitting, as well as the upcoming 2024 report, which will, of course, be due early-ish next year. Last month, we had had a conversation about the Botini parcel in Pine Hill. There has been an agreement signed with Botini for us to get access to that parcel. And I can't speak to the specific status, but we had agreed that there would be a Level 1 environmental review of that parcel. And I believe that's proceeding now that we have legal access to that land. So, hopefully, we'll get that sooner versus later and then can see how we wish to move forward with that. On related payment issue or parking issue of sorts, we've had a longstanding code, bit of code in our book around payment in lieu of parking requirements. And so, there is a bit in our code that says that folks who are in the hamlet commercial zones may use payment in lieu of the statutory parking requirements established in our zoning code. This is pre-existing law. But to the best of my knowledge and as best as our zoning enforcement officer has indicated, this provision has not been used recently, nor has a fee amount been set. And that law establishes that the town board would set a fee for this roughly every year. So, there's currently a proposal of a fee in front of the planning board. And the planning board wouldn't pass this, but if the planning board feels that this is an appropriate fee, then they might recommend that to this board to adopt or amend.
So, just a question, if you don't have enough parking spaces for your business, you can pay for existing parking spaces, is that true?
Exactly, but you do have to be in a hamlet commercial district. And I believe that code also does establish that the number is still somewhat up to the planning board. So, there is some discretion in there, but one of the barriers to using this is that it says that applicants may available of this, avail themselves of this provision at a fee set by the town board, and the town board has.
There is no fee.
There is no fee, right.
Or a.
Correct, yeah. And so, the proposal here is for the planning board to consider a potential fee. And if they choose to do so, then we might consider it. If they don't choose to do so, then this remains a bit of open work for us perhaps. But you're correct, it would be payment in lieu of parking for new applicants in the hamlet commercial region. Hamlet commercials. That's frankly a legal question that I'm probably not advised to fully recommend on, but my sense of the law is that that is, that it would not be retroactive and it would only apply to new applicants. And again, I feel slightly uncomfortable answering that definitively, but my intuitive sense of it. It's, the law as written is at the application level. So, unless there is an amendment to the law, I do not believe that it would apply retroactively. And again, obviously, I don't have it in front of me and not a lawyer, but that is my intuitive sense of how that is likely to be as currently written. Only a handful of other things, like do you thank Gary Carr for the new ramp that allowed election day to be fairly successful and allow people to make access of this facility? Again, correct me if anybody knows more, but I believe the stormwater runoff for Pine Hill is currently basically a grant application awaiting CWC's approval. So, that's kind of where that particular project stands. Because I'm not seeing Sam here, thank you to the folks who did a bunch of work on the skate park in Pine Hill. And then, the last bit is that the last month, we named three individuals, Carrie Henderson, Catherine Haber, and Babes Manfield, Barbara Mansfield, to the Phoenicia Water Committee. And they met earlier this week, largely to get themselves administratively organized. They are hoping to have a meeting on the 18th at 6:30 at a location that will ultimately be confirmed and published, but will be obviously within the Phoenicia Water District. But they haven't yet found quite exactly what their public home is going to be. And that's an awful lot of talking, but I believe that is all of the projects that come to mind. Supervisor's revenue report, a total of $99,505.11 was received as revenue. And I think that's perhaps sufficient for that. Joyce, communications?
So, yeah, so everything exists on our website, our Facebook page, all our upcoming events. But the one thing people really, really like is the annual complimentary Thanksgiving dinner, which is going to be at the parish hall this year, Saturday, November 23rd. So, contact Mike Ruane. And the poster is on our website and Facebook page, so you can get his number there. Also, we want to thank Beverly Rayon for her generous donation to our house shed. And our house shed is the building out back where we have, we loan medical equipment to people. And we did get a few wheelchairs lately, we have wheelchairs, crutches, you know, bathroom supplies and all that. So, this really helps us because we do have to buy some things now and then. So, we really appreciate that. And that's it. You know about the bird ban, you know about the water usage, and hopefully it'll rain. It's going to rain one day this weekend, that's not going to be enough. We need, you know, good sopping rain, it's very dry.
Thank you, Joyce. Ambulance report?
October 2024 report, total calls received 31, mutually given 1, 10 dollars, mutually received 0. Total October reports, 31 reports, total transport 20, total load transport/standby at the locations, 11.
Thank you.
That's okay. October and the beginning of November, we've been incredibly busy for the ambulance staff administration. Every two years, the New York State Department of Health requires the ambulance service to recertify as a certified medical service in the state of New York. This results in exhaustive amounts of paperwork and updating all our operating policies and rosters on file at the Department of Health. On top of this, there is onsite inspection every two years by the Department of Health. Most of the time, they stagger these onsite visits offices to the year they can actually certify. This time, they did not. So, as a matter of fact, it has been all hands on deck as we prepare for the site visit, and we're sure we'll be great as we have figured it out. We would also like to welcome a new addition to our squad following his appointment. Joseph Carmody comes to us from Sorbetes as a part-time airman. Joe also works at the ambulance and is a volunteer firefighter at the Sorbetes Fire Department. He's a good catch. Please exercise extreme caution in regards to anything that creates spark or flame outdoors. This includes discarded smoking materials, wood stove residue, et cetera, in the town of Shandakeen. We are still in the burn ban and it's effective October 24th. Stay safe out there, watch your mobile, and keep your distance. Department of Health, Special Agent Services.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Building committee?
Building department issued 22 building permits, 21 certificates of compliance, five certificates of occupancy, two floodplain permits, three demolition permits, no stop work orders, and under inspections, one pre-inspection visit was completed and 11 inspections were done.
Fantastic. And police?
A total of 117 incidents with three arrests and notably no criminal mischief or noise, so it was a mellow Halloween.
Good to hear. Phoenicia Water is not present, but as noted before, there is a new Phoenicia Water Committee who is expecting to meet again on the 18th at 6:30 at a location that will be published ahead of time. Pine Hill, again, reiterating, and this is for both districts, that water should be conserved as much as reasonably can. And museum?
The monthly report of the Shandakeen Historical Museum for October 2024. The museum participated in the Phoenicia Farmers Market throughout the month of October, offering the public a range of items from our museum table. There continues to be great interest by the community to interact, visit, and make use of the museum. On October 13th, Cynthia Nicotin of the Brunel Park Sculpture Garden gave an intriguing presentation on the life and work of French photographer, sculptor, and catskill entrepreneur Emil Brunel. The event was attended by two dozen people. An event on the, I'm sorry, an exhibit on the Brunel Sculpture Garden was also set up for the month of October. It is through Cynthia Nicotin that the museum is now listed on the I-8 New York Pathway Through History program. On October 25th, the museum met with two archivists from the New York State Archives to receive a replica of the 1678 Nicholas Treaty Asoas Indian Blomberg on loan to the museum for display during Native American Heritage Month, along with publications covering the state's early interaction with indigenous tribes. The New York State Archives is part of the Office of Cultural Education, an office of the New York State Education Department. The town of Shandakeen helped purchase two new dehumidifiers for the museum. We're very grateful for this much-needed improvement. We are working to improve heating and dehumidifying issues in the building. We are looking also into decarbonization strategies and possible E.V. parking in coordination with some of our upcoming grant proposals. Grants for several new exhibits are being prepared and submitted for next year, including the New York Forward Grant in collaboration with Jan Jaffe and the Wellington Hotel in Pine Hill. The plan is to start applying for grants that would help fund interactive exhibits to enhance the quality and depth of our exhibitions, attracting more visitors and tourists to Pine Hill and the museum. The museum plans to offer events, promotions, coordinated with local entities like the Wellington Hotel, Pine Hill Community Center, Morton Memorial Library, Pine Hill Rail Trail, Bel Air, and the Phoenicia Business Association, as well as the Emerson Hotel. Through better marketing and event programming, the museum plans to attract visiting tourists through regional media ads and robust social media engagement. There were over 35 visitors in October to the museum, including a family visiting from as far away as Malaysia. Many of the museum visitors are regional history buffs doing research. They often leave generous donations and grateful messages respectfully submitted just before. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Parks and Recreation?
I was unable to attend our last meeting. However, I can speak for the whole committee in saying that we're very grateful for awarding that bid for Glenbrook. We look forward to getting that work done. And again, thank you to the Shandakeen Shredders for putting the work in and assembling that little half-pipe. It's mostly assembled and I believe they'll be done in the next week or so.
Perfect. Housing Smart, I don't personally have a report. I do believe they had a meeting and I believe it was recorded, if I'm not mistaken. Fortunately, I just don't have a report from them, so.
They had the Wellington presentation.
They did have the one on YouTube. Yeah, okay.
It was on YouTube, if anyone wants to see that.
That's what I thought. Conservation Advisory Council, I spoke a little bit about this. Their last meeting was, I think, quite valuable. Heidi Emmerich from Ulster County Environmental was present, as well as John Matheson from CWC. And there was another attendee present who's unfortunately named, isn't coming to me. But they predominantly discussed the CWC Flood Resiliency Program that is available to homeowners in local flood analysis areas, which at this point is nearly the entire town. And so, they discussed a little bit of the specifics of that program. That's also where, I believe it was Heidi who had indicated that Ulster County Emergency Services had those plum cases that I discussed at the very beginning. And so, that's what started that conversation with, do those devices work in our particular area? And if so, the CWC has previously gotten the town quite a bit of funding through its nicer to work, and that money would potentially be eligible to purchase one of those plum cases, again, if those are successful here. So, thank you to Beth Waterman and the CWC for hosting that particular event and to Chief Story for doing that research on the plum cases. As far as the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so we've been on hiatus for the past couple of months due to logistics mix-up. I believe the next meeting, we are working to have that on December 9th at 4:00 P.M.
Perfect. Thank you. So, unless there's any other committee updates anyone might want to make, are there public comments on resolutions? So, I am expecting to have a conversation, but we are not expecting to pass a budget today. And that actually leads somewhat closely into the motions. Are there any other comments on the resolutions? It's a big opportunity here. No. So, we obviously, this came up in my initial report here, but the supervisor was not able to finalize the preliminary budget ahead of this meeting, unfortunately. And so, we did not discuss the preliminary budget in the public hearing that was just roughly an hour ago. We have posted a tentative budget on the website that the board has had access to. It has been available to the public. And again, I said this in the public hearing, but would like to reiterate, thank you to a number of folks in town hall, Kara, Amy, Barb, and Grace, probably others, but those are the ones who immediately come to mind. Thank you to the board for your assistance. And again, thank you to former supervisor Stanley, who was very gracious in giving some time to reviewing that budget. Because that preliminary budget was never finalized, if this is amenable to everyone, I would like to make a motion to retract that preliminary budget, which was approved at the public, sorry, the budget hearing that we had some time before that, but was never really finalized. And to, along those lines, Table Resolution 130. Second.
It's the second.
Second and twice, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Before we go to the next one, the board has, I believe, felt that they've had enough time with the tentative budget to consider it as a preliminary budget. I think it's probably most appropriate for that motion to be made after open public comment. However, in the meantime, we have felt that it is acceptable to create the public hearing. And so, that public hearing, this is an amendment to the paper version here, would be scheduled for November 12th at 6:30, again, if that is amenable. So, I'd like to make a motion to schedule that public hearing for the purposes of passing the 2025 budget for November 12th at 6:30. Second. Fantastic. All in favor?
Aye.
Cool. Thank you, everyone. And again, we will discuss the budget after open public comments, so that there's some time for folks to, I think, provide any feedback on that ahead of time, passing as a preliminary. The only other motion that had been kind of brought to my attention, and maybe this can wait, but I'd heard that Carrie Henderson wanted to join the Parks Committee. That can ask you at all?
Like I said, I wasn't at the last meeting, and if it happened, it wasn't put in an email.
So, we could probably just wait on that.
Yeah.
We'd do it in January. Okay. Would anyone else on the board like to make a motion at this time? this time? Then if we might proceed to resolutions?
Resolution 12924, resolution to pay all bills. Whereas the Department of Audit and Control require town boards to sign and inspect all vouchers coming into town for payment to number and total amounts from each fund, therefore be it resolved that the town board authorize the following vouchers paid. General, $305,990.21. Highway, $175,912.73. Phoenisha Water, $10,759.91. Pine Hill Water, $5,906.23. Phoenisha Lights, $614.48. Chi Chester Lights, $103.60. Pine Hill Lights, $385.30. Pine Hill Sign, $32.29. Shandaken Septic, $1,947.94. Hudler Cemetery, $100. Heritage, $1,507.72, for a total of $503,260.41, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steve?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Resolution 131-24.
Oh, we're going to table this, right?
We tabled.
We tabled 130.
We tabled 130.
Skipping ahead to 131.
Got it, got it, got it. Sorry. Go ahead.
Adopting Town of Shandaken Local Law 5-2024, a local law to override the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law Section Article 3-C. Whereas the Town of Shandaken foresees the necessity to exceed the tax levy limited, limit established in General Municipal Law Article 3-C, and whereas the Town of Shandaken Town Board held a public hearing on...
Today?
Today. We did.
Today, yes. So, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, November 6th.
Oh, I lost that so fast.
So, I was confused. On Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, at the Shandaken Town Hall, to hear all those in favor and against the adoption of said law and according to the General Municipal Law, and therefore let it be resolved that the Town of Shandaken Town Board does hereby adopt Local Law Number 5 of 2024 in order to allow the town to exceed the tax levy limit imposed for the 2025 fiscal year budget for the Town of Shandaken, and move its adoption.
Would like to note that, as proposed, the tentative budget is approximately $20,000, $23,000 below the tax cap. So, it's generally considered judicious for us to do this in case that budget is changed anytime before its final adoption, but we are not intending to breach the tax cap. And second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steve?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Resolution 132-24, resolution to hire mechanic intern for Highway Department. Whereas the Town of Shandaken Highway Department has teamed up with the Ulster County Bosse's Career and Technical Center to give one 12th grade student an opportunity to intern with the department for the remainder of the 24-25 school year. And whereas the Town Highway Superintendent, Highway Secretary, and David Rosen of Bosse's have come together to identify one qualified student residing in Big Indian, New York, the Ontario School District, who is on the path to completing his certification for mechanics, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Shandaken Town Board does hereby authorize the town supervisor to approve the paid internship of Nolan J. Van Blarkum of Big Indian to be under the leadership of Highway Superintendent Eric Kopfmeister at a pay rate of $17 per hour weekly.
Yeah, they get paid weekly, highway.
Paid weekly, right. And move its adoption.
Second.
Any comments, Eric? All good? Fantastic.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steve?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Just because that's one of those times when our extra wording of adding that weekly just confuses us. We do that regularly with pay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Resolution Number 133-24, plan to use the department to hire high officers. Whereas the Town of Shandaken is a town in sixth class, and where their town police department is, whereas officers have been recommended by police commissioners to be hired part-time, therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the Town Law of the State of New York, Section 21, be the town board hereby appoint the following individual as part-time police officers, receives compensation as indicated for officers between the three and three counties. Individuals who are responsible for associated costs of sex training and education, Jordan Berry, $15 per hour, contingent upon completion of background investigation, completion of academy training. And that said, police officers shall have all powers consorted among police officers by the General Law of the State of New York, including but not only two, and such powers not consistent with the law, as are here in Act 64, and that said, police officers shall have all powers designated in Section 2.20 of the Criminal Procedure Law of the State of New York, and shall have the following special duties. One, to first enforce all laws, ordinances, and regulations of the Town of Shandaken. Two, to enforce the vehicle and traffic law of the State of New York, to the extent that police officers may be so permitted by the General Law of the State of New York. Three, to enforce such penal statutes as police officers are permitted to enforce pursuant to the General Laws of the State of New York, and in furtherance of said special duties, police officers are hereby authorized to use any town vehicle, to be known as a police officer's vehicle, which may be equipped with emergency lights in accordance with applicable sections of the vehicle and traffic. Yep?
Yep.
Okay. And may use the state and county radio to the extent they may comply with the General Laws of the State of New York, and may carry far more than this one on duty in compliance with the General Laws of the State of New York. Continue, police officers, General. And move it to adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steve?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Resolution 13424, hire municipal worker. Whereas pursuant to Section 20 of the Town Law, it is the duty of the town board to appoint all employees of the town, therefore be it resolved that Kimberly Neal is appointed as a municipal worker for the Town of Shandaken at $16 per hour, no more than six hours per week, while dispensing duties of said office. Her term is to expire December 31st, 2024, and move it to adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steve?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Resolution 135-24, resolution authorize a waiver of 30-day notification required by the New York State Liquor Authority. Whereas Dark Sky Hospitality, doing business as The Mountain Brook, has applied for a liquor license, and whereas Dark Sky Hospitality has requested that the town waive the 30-day notification required by the New York State Liquor Authority in an effort to expedite the granting of a liquor license to Dark Sky Hospitality, and now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the Town of Shandaken does hereby grant the request of, and does hereby waive the 30-day liquor license notice requirement to Dark Sky Hospitality, doing business as The Mountain Brook, 540 State Route 42, Shandaken, New York, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steve?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
Resolution 136-24, ambulance paramedic. Whereas under section of the Town Law, the town board shall designate all appointed officers and employees of the town, therefore be it resolved that the following personnel be appointed to the Shandaken Town Ambulance at the following rates. Joseph Carmody III, part-time, at $24.62 per hour, and move its adoption.
Second.
Board Member Drake?
Yes.
Board Member Nysel?
Yes.
Board Member Steve?
Yes.
Board Member Van Blarkum?
Yes.
So, as previously mentioned, I think we wanted to have a brief discussion around the budget and consider its adoption as a preliminary budget, but I think it's probably appropriate to have that conversation immediately following public comment. Are there any public comments on any issue at this time? I think, Andrew, you were first.
My mic is a little bit.
Not personally. Bill Mainz.
I'll give you the microphone.
All right. You sure?
Hopefully, we don't play long. I did have an opportunity to date, review the preliminary budget.
Tentative budget, I suspect. Tentative budget, yes.
And no business on, what, pretty steep compensation increases for a variety of decisions from the supervisor down to the assessor, ranging from 6% to 85%. The average salary increase in the United States so far this year for salary employees, according to the Department of Labor, is 3.9%. The current cost of living increase that people are getting in the United States is 3.2%. Social Security recipients get only 2.5%. Looking in nearby townhouses, I happen to first look at the Town Olive, where everyone from the town supervisor, to the town justices, to the town clerk, are getting 3.75%. It seems that the rate of the Shandaken is shooting for, for a little bit excessive, based on a little bit of research that I've done, and I would like that to understand this standing.
So, it's certainly not my place to speak for the entire board, but I can at least provide an initial response to that, which is, I did look at the Olive rates of pay, and unfortunately, of course, don't have them memorized, but I believe their supervisor makes approximately $60,000, whereas our supervisor is making roughly $41,000. And there are similar discrepancies in their current rates of pay versus ours. And so, we have, I believe, a longstanding discrepancy between what we have been paying both our elected officials, as well as our town employees, and that we are in a position of effectively catch-up to make these roles both livable and competitive for applicants across the board. And so, obviously, in order to do so, that would entail, at some level, a greater-than-cost-of-living increase.
So, is there a long-term plan, or is this a one-time?
Well, obviously, it's up to each year's elected board to make those decisions. So, a long-term plan is difficult to do when individuals are having terms between two and four years. But speaking for myself, and please allow other members of the board to speak here, but my sense is that we would be well-advised to continue that practice of increasing to get ourselves, again, more in line with what appears to be a reasonable rate of pay. So, the short answer is, in my own opinion, the answer is yes, we should have a long-term opinion. However, my term ends next year, so.
Is there a plan?
I mean...
I'm going to calculate going...
I'm going to say, as Robert said, that we can't plan beyond our terms. We can hope, we can have secret desires. I would say the idea...
Do you have a plan going into the future?
We hope to be able to continue the increases to catch up to the other towns, not match their percentage increase. If we don't continue to increase at a greater rate that the surrounding towns do, then we will never catch up to their salaries. I'll use Eric as an example here. He's one of the rates, his position as highway supervisor, we are looking to raise drastically, because that is a position we are going to need filled, as much as Eric is the kind of guy who we think will be with us forever. At some point, we are going to replace him, and there is not a long line of people qualified lined up to take his place. And we are hoping by increasing salaries across the board in the town, as Robert said, we will start attracting more people to the position. It needs to pay a livable wage, and none of the positions currently do.
So, to answer your question...
Do you have a plan that the prospective employee can look at and know five years from now, the town board will likely salary to be at?
There's no one here who can make a plan for what the salary increase will be, or what the salary will be five years from now.
Why can't the town board make a projection that's not a...
That's not a plan. That's a projection.
I mean, literally, each year...
Change my words from a plan to a projection.
Each year's board would be free to disregard it.
Yeah.
But there would be, and I'm going to use the word plan, a plan, and now it's a little bit tachy.
To answer your question...
If Olive decides to go a little bit higher next year, that means that we have to go and catch up something more.
We're not comparing ourselves directly to Olive. But to answer your question, we do have a plan. Our plan is to make those positions competitive with the surrounding areas, and to make them livable, and to attract better candidates, or suitable candidates. Do we have a number on paper that we're looking to achieve? No. In years past, since I've been on this board, we have always kicked back at increases, particularly to supervisor, highway, assessor, town clerk, you know, so we're trying to play catch-up, like Councilman Drake said. You know, we're trying to do better, the same way we've done with the secretaries and the clerical workers, in making these jobs suitable.
But are secretaries and clerical workers, are they subject to organ units, who do them to do anything?
No, they're not part of the unit. No, the highway and the police are part of the unit.
Okay.
Then, I'm... Then, I'm...
I would need to do a lot more work to understand and see this going into the future, but I think I have a couple other questions. On short-term tenant licenses, I know there's a lot of like to mention. The fees that the town gets from that are going from $105,000 in '23 down to a budget of $70,000 in '24.
Oh, $170,000 in 2024. It's up.
And then down to $100,000 in '25.
That was the application fees?
It's a combination of there being some application fees, also...
We don't do those now.
My personal sense is that the budgeting in 2024 was not tremendously accurate, and so, the 2025 number is closer to the 2023 actual, because that is...
35% in active.
I believe that is correct. Obviously, each budget has to rectify mistakes seen in prior budgets.
Let's see, recreation, perfect, perfect service, is there 40% inings there?
So, that's a combination of two or three things. The one is that we have a new, or at least a potentially new park in the form of Rock Cut. We also have a number of current grants being worked on in Glenbrook and potentially elsewhere. And so, some of those require both matching funds, or it is economical to hire the same vendors to do additional non-grant work in the long term. So, yes, the work could be postponed to future years, but if you've already got an excavator, you can have them do both grant work and non-grant work more economically than to split those two jobs. So, we would expect that next year would see an increase into our net thing, our net expenses for personal services and parks.
Highway department expenses, there are two items, one is increased by 38.5%, and the two items are $270,000 and $25,000 for sign with the road rating and sky roads, etc., etc. Every day I walk on my house with my handle, too close to office to get my name. I can't use the side door because of this. Ding ding. So, I walk on the road. The side of the road was empty because there were holes in the side of the road in here from six inches to a foot deep. Some of them, for a stretch of about 30 feet, were filled with blacktop. Blacktop wasn't compressed, it wasn't driven over, it was just dry, and the rest of the street was left wide open. It would seem in a budget of this much money, the safety of people walking on the streets, can't use the side door to counter, and these holes on the road could be fixed. They've been there for 20 years. If my calls out, dollars fixed, it seems that in a budget this large, a simple safety fix like mine had could take place.
So, ultimately, that budget is not within the purview of the town board. There is a different elected official for that, but I won't throw this to them. I know perfectly well that those costs are much more than most folks would realize. And so, while I have no doubt that we could have a budget that would include everything that folks would want with roads, I suspect that the budget increase that would be entailed would...
I'm not saying everything, I'm saying one place that I'm familiar with, or sooner or later, I'm going to fall in the hole, twist my leg, because the town doesn't do the billables.
Well, certainly happy to take that under, Eric, if you would like.
But how could they fix 30 feet, and now I'm continuing to get a red carpet that we're going to...
And they don't go back to the...
You guys have 60 miles of road.
I don't go on for 60 miles of road.
We have 30.
Where I need to go south.
Now I need to walk.
So...
Because of social dangers.
If I could enter...
Now, how do we have to...
So, I would like to take a moment here, because while this town does have a history of having public comment be public conversation, that is not actually what this in time is intended for. It is customarily, in most towns, folks make a statement, and then the board is allowed time to deliberate on those statements. If you have other budget questions, I think it's worth hearing those. But I don't believe this is an appropriate venue for a conversation on PopHoles, and I'm sorry, Kevin.
If I could add something.
Of all your answers, the figures for that last year are the same. Your vote is also on...
So my understanding is that a combination of a different broker as well as previous budgeting, that this is in line. That is my understanding, is that this is appropriate for our expected costs for next year.
And I guess my last question is, is the town permitted contingency lines in their budgets for emergencies?
We are allowed to have, my understanding is, a single $25,000 contingency line, which is located in the budget there.
I'm thinking in terms of the current drought on water emergencies. Should that ever, should something go wrong, the Pine Hill pumping station or the Pine Hill residence, or a similar situation in Phoenicia? How would the town finance an emergency repair?
So there's a few different answers. Of course, that wouldn't be generally within the general fund. In your specific examples, those would generally be the water district funds. There is fund balances in some cases. So fund balances would be money that was not expended in previous year's budgets. So that is one source of it. And of course, towns routinely make use of bonding and loans. And so in the case of emergency, that is often what is necessary, obviously depending on the size. Unfortunately, towns are not generally allowed to run a profit. And so we are not permitted to have particularly large contingencies or fund balances. The expected behavior is that you attempt to accommodate as much as you can within the budget, and that otherwise, you seek outside funding when those things happen.
You don't have to have a bridge to walk on Main Street, or Pine Hill, or... And walk off those when you can to occur, etc. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other public comment?
State your name and hear if you know who you are.
Hi, I'm Kate Storm. Sam couldn't be here, she had a firehouse meeting, I think.
I believe Sam might be right behind you now.
Oh, thank you. So anyways, I'm representing the National Business Association right now. Do you all agree that this is a twirl through town here?
Is this a trick question?
Well, we...
It is a substantial part of our industry. I think that is a fair comment, yes.
And there's a sore lack of porta potties and trash cans. And probably in Pine Hill too, but we're looking at Phoenicia right now. So is there anything in the budget for that?
So trash cans, as I know, come up in many conversations and has a number of logistical challenges, RE... And people, I think, are arguably more destructive than bears are, but both problematic. There is, as you saw, a decent amount of additional funds for Parks and Rec Personal Services. I can't necessarily say that that is exactly where that would be allocated, but I think that's absolutely part of that consideration. And I do think that funding will largely, to the extent possible, be directed by recommendations of the Parks and Rec Committee. And so they obviously have a lot of responsibilities and priorities on their plate, but if that rises to the top, I think that's certainly worth consideration. A very convoluted answer, I think we would like to, it's just a...
Yeah, I mean, at the Parks and Rec meetings, a big part of that conversation has been more available porta potties in Smith Park and Parish, to be specific.
Yeah, just to make that part of considering that it's... Part of what people are probably...
You want porta potties on Main Street?
So that's... We're probably... No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I was just making, just clearing it up.
Because of our... You said you're buying your address, we're not... Side door, that hopefully we... We're still out on... And then this is for... But if you're not in, we'll wait for you then. And I know this situation, like, day, day, week, year.
But is there a big garbage problem on Main Street? I mean, as the one where... I'm the first one in the town to warn. Every year, I get that.
Um... I believe the need and the desire is clearly there, and I think the board will absolutely do its best to find a way to do that.
There's got to be little containers that could be bear-proof of some sort that you could buy now and maybe attach.
Perhaps, but that probably won't be figured out tonight. The hope is that the budget could perhaps accommodate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No.
No, 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 we appreciate that.
We appreciate it. It's been on our radar for like the last three months now. We've had conversations about it. I think for us, it's more of a logistical situation of who's going to remove the trash. If we had small trash receptacles on Main Street, which I think is a great idea, but it's figuring out how best to do it, so, yeah.
Logistically do it and then make it. But really, we should have that budget, because we are here with the town now. That's what I...
Appreciate that sentiment.
Thank you.
I think Sam, in the last meeting, said about the trash, only small holes that you could throw trash into, so people don't throw a whole kitchen check into the...
Yeah.
Stuff like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do like to leave that, like, this is a little mixed story.
Well, let's work on that because it's really important. Because you have cars, and you want to, you know, have little facilities, and they have dogs, and they know, you know, bags, because they're fine by that. And so...
I would leave them in front of Eric's, but that's not good anymore.
Make a pile of Eric's.
On the subject of porta potties, just as much as I know we all love those beautiful blue structures, they really bring charm to our town, the more of them that pop up. Has anyone ever looked into, is it feasible, possible, to do any kind of alternative? A composting, public restroom someplace in any of our parks or anything instead of those delightful porta potties?
I think it's a great idea. I think the problem is that we don't own half our parks.
Yeah.
So until we possess Parish, I don't think that's an option. Big Indian, I also don't think it's an option. But certainly with Smith, we could talk about a composting toilet, but it's a great idea.
Well, you could ask Robin Kirk about that little sliver of property where we have our sign, that there could be something there. Somebody might donate...
You certainly could, and then they would ask the archdiocese, and we would run around in circles.
And he says that they would be...
Yeah, maybe some...
Some of that, you know, one part of that... I know that porta potty for the farm worker, that they're all the time, they're locked.
We absolutely have discussed adding porta potties to the...
So anyways, that's the story.
Appreciate that, and I think that'll be an ongoing conversation for next year.
Yep.
All right, take a moment.
Thanks, guys. Are there any other public comments at this time? Sam, was there anything you perhaps wanted to add? You obviously weren't here, but is there anything? You sometimes have events that you like to mention, so...
I mentioned the community dinner. I figured we'd be here.
Um, so Olive mentioned the whole season, doing a cook drive through December 31st. Any coats of any season, any type, new or gently used, any of our branch locations, you can drop them off. American Legion Auxiliary's Children's Christmas Party is the morning of December 7th. I know we're not in December yet, but we're... I just want to mention it. You have to call or call Kimberly. There's going to be a poster for this, so call Kimberly or you call Legion to sign your kit up, and then you tell them what kind of present they like, and we buy presents for the kids. So that's the morning of the 27th at the Parish Hall, 11 to 2:00 p.m. And then the evening on the 7th is the Miracle on Main Street Parade of Lights at 4:00 p.m. Line up at the elementary school, and then we go through town, tree lighting, then we go to the Parish Hall. And then backtracking to November 30th at 10:00 a.m. is the Turkey Trot. They fundraise for Parks and Recreation, and they have 15 more sponsors than last year, and registration is open at phoeniciatruck.org. And they are also finishing the race with food and a fall or Thanksgiving-themed costume and dance contest this year. I guess really everything else on my Parks report that I missed? I missed that, I assume, right as we're...
Well...
I did a great job.
Oh.
I, yeah, I mean...
It was like you were here.
Was it? I bet it was.
I said I didn't make the last move, so if you have anything to add.
Okay, I guess the only real thing was, can we officially make a position for Kerry Henderson as the Smith Park Skate Park Manager? Is that okay?
Yeah, so as soon as... Yeah, as soon as we finish public comment, we've got another motion to make anyway, so we're happy to do that.
What's his official position?
Skate Park Manager?
Sure.
Cool.
Um, I think that's probably the most important thing. Oh, no, and then that there was, Pine Hill Fire Department is curious and asking about a access to Bel Air Beach, or that there used to be some sort of swimming hole. But obviously, like we've mentioned, it's a drought. So like for safety reasons, they're curious about access to Pine Hill. You know, Bel Air Beach.
Are they referring to that old bridge that was on Lake Street?
I think so, and then there was some sort of swimming hole that was there. I'm not familiar about...
It's Orta's property.
Yeah, it would have to be a conversation with Orta.
Okay.
It's certainly something we could facilitate, but they're not going to put a bridge on Lake Street.
Yeah, no, I understand that they want like the direct access that way to the beach, but again, for fire reasons, I think that that would be a concern. That's a concern that they have.
I think, yeah, we could certainly facilitate that, but officially approval would have to be given by Bel Air and Orta. Any room? Yep.
And something, oh, something that's been on my mind. Is there anything being done about looking back at the sewer system for Phoenicia? Has anything been done about that, or been talked about?
That's a conversation that has come up in a number of venues. I believe it has been, it has been informally at least mentioned to CWC. The next step in my opinion, perhaps, is that we would need to more formally set meetings with them. There, of course, was a petition that was started initially by...
Mary.
Mary Sertoma, and then I believe it may have possibly moved over to Leah...
It's kind of a...
So Kerry is picking it up.
Yes, Kerry, I talked to Kerry, he was going to take it over.
So I think it's probably worth noting that there is no legal requirement for that petition. I believe the purpose of that petition, and I have certainly, I've signed it myself, and I've encouraged others to, is to show CWC that the town has changed sufficiently for them to want to revisit that conversation. My sense of it is that while that is an important conversation that probably needs to happen, and again, this is my own personal opinion, from frankly, a capacity standpoint, we probably need to have considerations of the town hall is also a CWC conversation and is probably the more acute one. And there's simply a limited capacity for the town to manage too many projects, and so that one is perhaps...
This is kind of a major thing that really is very important at this point because no one can sell their building, no one can do anything in Phoenicia without a sewer system because of the septic issue problem. And so, you know, you see things are dying on the vine in Phoenicia.
My, my sense, and again, I'm speaking solely for myself here, and please anyone join...
Well, I want to tell you, I worked with Senator Seward on this when he was alive. And the city said that if we did a resolution from the town of Shandaken, stating that we were interested in reopening the issue, that they would listen. That didn't say they were going to do anything, that they would listen. So I think that's why Peter had asked for a certain amount of signatures so that he could do a resolution in the town. So I'm not sure where that's standing.
Well, we can do that resolution in theory at any point in time. I think having that survey have as many signatures as possible serves us very well because I think we probably only get one more bite at this particular apple. It's a once-a-generational type of approach here. So I think encouraging folks to sign that is probably our best momentary approach. I also think it's very important that this becomes a conversation that gets internalized and documented within the context of our comprehensive plan. And so if the survey is successful and the comprehensive plan notes that this is one of the town's highest priorities, then I think the only other internal barrier for us is making sure that we have the capacity. So right now, our sort of most ongoing project is probably Glenbrook Park and then comprehensive plan. We potentially have movement in regards to town hall, maybe some parking things. We're still waiting on Pine Hill septic, sorry, stormwater runoff that we'll see. And I agree that it's absolutely important, it's a conversation that happens, but because of our unique municipal history with this issue, I think we need to make sure that all of our ducks are in a row before we start the conversation. So completely, like, I think it absolutely has to be a conversation, but I do hesitate about moving it up prematurely and then finding ourselves suddenly pushed three steps backwards because we're not in place to actually do the work.
So I'm hearing that you're saying that the resolution would happen with the amount of signatures happening, and that would be a step...
Well, I think it'd be signatures, comprehensive plan, then resolution.
Yeah, the resolution would be a memorializing resolution anyway, but for what it's worth, the comp plan, we're in the very early stages of working with our planners. But every conversation we've had, the Phoenicia sewer has been very high on the list of talking points.
Okay, very good, excellent.
And there's going to be many public hearings associated with the comprehensive plan, so again, we encourage, please tell other people you know to discuss that and bring that forward.
Okay, thank you, okay, good, good.
Andrew?
I just had something to add to that discussion. I asked a lot of people about sewer treatment in Phoenicia, and since that official discussion, the Phoenician elementary school has become available, so what status of it is it now? But I was seeing the...
I'm not sure everyone would agree on that necessarily, but it is currently...
I believe everyone in Phoenicia would disagree with you.
That parcel is owned by the Antioa School District. It is at least believed to be for sale. The last I've heard is that they are looking to get best market value for it, which at the moment largely would preclude our particular payment for it.
More importantly, it's partially in the flood zone.
That's also a big part.
I'll tell them that the sewer...
It is not, as far as I'm concerned. Eric, you might know the math better.
What would you think of the vertical system? And there are no...
Our community rating system and other problems, yeah.
Believe me, we all want Phoenicia School to be some sort of useful, useful project, but...
I remember...
Yeah, it's our unique municipal history that makes this, I think, a bit of a touchy conversation, as it were. Are there any other public comments? Then I believe there are two motions we wanted to consider. So the first would be a motion to make Kerry Henderson state, sorry, skate park coordinator and a member of the Parks and Rec Committee.
Second.
All in favor? We've had some conversation around the budget. Would anyone like to make the motion to move the tentative budget as discussed today as the preliminary budget?
Yeah, I'll do that. I'd like to make that motion.
And is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other business?
And then a public hearing for next week.
For the 12th at 6:30.
So there'll be a public hearing on the budget next Tuesday.
November 12th?
Yep.
Six thirty.
6:30 p.m.
To be considered for adoption. Is there any other business before the board? Then would like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Helen Seabald, Paul Jase Beecher Smith Jr. and Lowell Smith, and would of course like to give our gratitude and best wishes to Supervisor Discafani and his family. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.